What do you mean by all those materials? I mean, there's nothing between your uses. That's super weird.
Okay, so we're enjoying the audience. I love the acknowledgement. I'm excited to be on this.
Right, right. What, what's the quality of your services? Yeah, yeah, so like it's still like, what would you say is like a high quality ability site? What, what does that mean?
Yes.
Then.
Preferable.
Okay, well. Most of our people, there was Mary and Karen. She was a lieutenant. I'd say. And she's not, she's not.
So it's, yeah, it's.
And it was also more the, the rail. Karen, they, they, and Mary, to me.
Yes.
She was, they, they didn't put any.
There you go.
The, the noise loud. Sure. It was really loud. There was like a noise. Right, and so, that was, it was something that if you. Well, you can learn that sometimes. You got me there. We have to take a. You know, it's a standard for the city. Yeah. Um, there. And actually, they're really. It was expensive. And, uh, they, they. Email us. But, yeah, they're healthy, I was just saying. You have to put in a right.
No, me either.
It was, it was so much competition. Or interesting body there. People that, businesses that were.
Question.
If they need to follow.
Right.
Where it's, you know, just. Cause I'll be like, she was a. It was a little garbage area. So you're feeling it with his body? Yeah. And another big concern is that. Yeah.
At the place.
The structure. He's wrong. We're at land. Problems when he needs some infrastructure. The bills coming in. But anything. She invited. People are being like the stormwater. Yeah, so. Okay, all that, yeah. That, that. That's, yeah, and a bit more.
Yeah.
More usage and terrain. Yeah. They, you know, and like, as you see, or notice, mirrors where. Which is, okay. Literally. Right. And whole neighborhoods under, under. This is. I think it's just like a really nasty idea, but. It just. It's just thought about that. Right, right. It's close to the hand. Maybe, I remember. Right. In the, in the county, they've got these. If you, yeah, I don't think. It's huge. Right, yeah, it is. Yeah. They helped them to do it out. Going down and. Making sure things are ready for it. Which is a big expense of a city. Then you got it. That's the question. Should build on it. Right, you know, you want the upper structure to be. Yeah. Yeah, true. I'm an engineer, but I was just. Here, so what kind of. Just one system. Low. Surprisingly, they're looking at.
Good.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, want to thank everybody for coming out. It is, uh, six P M. So we'll go ahead and start this special called Meeting of the Planning Commission. Uh, we really have one primary, uh, item of business tonight, and that's, uh, review and consideration of the draft of the twenty twenty five through twenty forty five comprehensive plan. So, uh, at the top of our agenda is, uh, of course, this call to order, and then we will, uh, now start with roll call to my far left, please.
Debbie Gordon.
Deb Cameron.
Scott Brown.
Elizabeth Shin.
Jackie Edmondson.
Alex Wallack.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Uh, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. Uh, we've got a few items that I'm just going to sail through here. I don't believe we have any minutes to consider, so we'll keep plowing forward. Are there, are any organizational procedural items? Okay, uh, no one finished business, then, I understand? All right, well, then, at this time, uh, we, uh, will hear new business. That's review and consideration of the draft twenty twenty five through twenty forty five comprehensive plan. I do want everybody to know it is definitely the policy of this, uh, planning commission to, uh, make sure voices are heard. So we will find a way there. If you have something you want us to hear and consider, I definitely urge you to stick around. We will do everything we can to make sure that what's important to you is heard by us. So, Richard, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I want to read a little bit, uh, about what the comprehensive plan is. Uh, it's from the state of Georgia. One of the fundamental responsibilities of local government is planning and the preparation of plans. Planning is the word we use to describe how our community shakes, guides, growth and development. Some people call the city planning, urban planning, and sometimes land use planning. The, the results of planning are contained in documents we call comprehensive plans or growth management plans. Effective planning ensures that future development will occur where, when, and how the community and local government wants. There are several important benefits to the entire community that result from the planning process. The quality of life is maintained and improved. There is a vision clearly stated and shared by all that describes the future of the community. Private property rights are protected. Economic development is encouraged and supported. There is more certainty about where, where development will occur, what it'll be like, and when it will happen, and how the cost of development will be met. So, uh, also, we have worked with the consultant, uh, T S W, uh, for the better part of a year now. Uh, we had a steering committee. I just want to call out their names. Uh, Anne Hanlon from the P C I D. Bob Pacella. David Abes. James Kramer. Joe Martinez. Les Lewis. Lynn Porzibon. Maranella Lopez. Michael Starling, who is the, uh, the committee has to have an economic development, uh, person, so he is our economic development person. Uh, Rich Reed, Sam Shabaga, who is also the chair, uh, excuse me, not the chair. He's the director of Community Development for the Atlanta Regional Commission. He also happens to be a fellow resident, so. Then Susan Mitchell and Tom Lambert, who's our council representative. And I want to point out that Scott Brown and Elizabeth Shin were also, uh, on there. So thank you all very much. So, uh, at this time, I will like to turn it over to Allison Stewart Harris. Uh, she's going to give you a brief presentation.
Um, we have a momentary, momentary, um, I T issue. Let me quickly get, uh, I T folks to help to make sure that we can get the screen pulled up. Looks like, looks like they are.
Right, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Allison Stewart Harris. I'm an associate principal at T S W, and it's been my great pleasure to work with you all in this community over the past year on the development of your comprehensive plan. Um, we have a fairly sizable presentation tonight. Um, I'm going to go through somewhat quickly, but if you have any questions, um, encourage you to, at least in terms of my, my preferences, please go ahead and ask any questions that you have. I'm happy to answer in any level of detail. Okay. All right, so our agenda tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about where we are in our comprehensive planning process as well as do an overview of all the engagement that we've undergone through part of the process. We'll talk a little bit about some of our big ideas, but we'll spend most of our time really talking about the character areas and what that land use guidelines and policy really look like in this plan. Um, and then we'll talk about some of the other components of the comprehensive plan and the next steps. So just a reminder is where we are. We started this process, um, just about a year ago. Um, you can see with this yellow bar where we are. Um, you might say, well, gosh, I thought we were pretty much done with the comprehensive plan. Um, we do have that full draft, but as a reminder, this is only one part of a bigger planning process. The big goal of this comprehensive plan is to set that high level vision for policy for Dunwoody moving forward, and that will be implemented then through your updated U D O process, which is what the, the bulk of the rest of the calendar shows. Where we are tonight, um, we've started the adoption process for the draft comprehensive plan. So tonight, we are presenting to you all, this is one of our big first presentations of the full draft. Um, what will we be doing after tonight is, uh, looking at some additional edits. Uh, we've had the plan online. We've gotten a number of comments from your citizens that will be considering. And then we'll be going in front of city council. Um, what I do want to note is that when this plan goes to city council next, it is not for approval or adoption. All we'll be asking city council to do is say, yes, we approve submitting this plan to the state for their review. So this is not an adoption meeting coming up. There is still a kind of multi-month process to go through where the state will review the plan against the state guidelines. So I want to start by talking a little bit about all of the engagement that we've done. Um, we've had a very robust engagement process, particularly around our steering committee. So again, thank you all for those who've been participating in that. That's been really helpful and really, uh, a very strong guiding force in this document. So on this calendar, you can see all of the engagement that we've done so far. You'll notice that a lot of those stars, those are the meetings and the specific engagement events that we've done. Um, those are a little bit more front loaded in this process. The reason for that is, you know, again, the comprehensive plan really sets that high level vision, and the code is what implements that. So we really want to get the community's input on that high level vision to make sure that the document really represents that moving forward. Couple of the things that we have done as part of this engagement program is we've really gotten out to the community. You know, want to recognize staff for all their help with this as well, to raise awareness about the plan and make sure that people are aware that it's happening, where they can go to get additional information, and how folks can en- engage directly in the process. Uh, we did an initial survey where we got over a thousand different responses, uh, which is a really, uh, high number. Sometimes these surveys are like about a hundred, two hundreds. This really shows the level of engagement and care that the Dunwoody community has. We did some pop-up events. Uh, we did a back to school night at Dunwoody Village early last fall. And we were also at Holiday Lights at Brook Run Park. Um, at each of these events, we were doing very specific engagement activities that related to where we were in the comprehensive plan. Uh, we also had a really great workshop in the fall called Dream Dunwoody. We were set up in a storefront just down the road here, and we got a lot of great input on what people really felt were the biggest needs and opportunities in Dunwoody, uh, what people really wanted to see moving forward. Um, some of the things we heard from that meeting were that people really wanted, you know, a true downtown for Dunwoody. Um, tree canopy protection enhancement, very important. Um, folks really want to see some reactive, uh, reactiveated bacon commercial and more walkable retail. Couple of recurring themes that we heard early throughout the process was, again, that desire for a real downtown for Dunwoody. Um, but also that people really want to see the neighborhood character protected and preserved. We've heard this very loud and clear throughout the process. Um, I mentioned that we had a, we have a very robust steering committee. This committee will continue on throughout this planning process to help inform the U D O as well. Uh, we started meeting back, uh, last July. Uh, so we had a meeting on July thirtieth, October first, uh, back in November and February. Um, our last meeting was in May. Uh, we came to the committee with a, a fairly well-developed draft plan and had a lot of really great conversation about looking at some of those details. Um, and what that plan really resulted in was we looked at, um, what, what I'll go over later was the stoplight charts. I'm really trying to refine, okay, this is exactly, if, if something's in green, what does that mean to be appropriate? What does that actually mean in terms of the process? What does it mean to be maybe appropriate with considerations? How is that going to connect to the U D O? What is that process actually going to look like? So we've been spending a lot of time really refining those and really trying to get those details correct. Um, we also had a final comprehensive plan workshop. Uh, I've recognized a number of faces here tonight, so thank you all for, for rejoining us. Um, in general, uh, we got a lot of input on, we were asking for input particularly on the different intensities that we're talking about for different character areas. In general, there was pretty good agreement about what the draft plan was showing. There were a couple of areas where folks really wanted some changes. Uh, for example, what we heard from that meeting was a little less intensity than proposed in Georgetown East and the Ashford area. Um, but also that people were okay with a little bit more intensity around the perimeter transition area and Winter's Chapel. Um, other recurring themes are, you know, more public green space, want better connectivity, and, you know, balance higher intensities with school capacity. Um, some, a lot of these slides are going to be very similar to what you all saw during our retreat in April. Um, but what we wanted to do was call out what has changed since then. So anytime you see this little symbol, that's going to connote a change, and those changes have occurred as a result of the input from the public workshop that we had and also from the last steering committee meeting. Um, you know, with comprehensive plans, they can take a lot of different forms. Um, a lot of them say like, you know, all right, here's our transportation chapter. Here's our economic development chapter. But as we were going through this process with the community, you, people weren't necessarily talking about, well, I really feel this, this strongly about, you know, housing, or I really feel very strongly about this one aspect of transportation. What we heard a lot about was places and the places that people really cared about. So we structured the document to really reflect sort of a multidisciplinary approach to different places. So the focus on key places is, number one, the perimeter, keep investing in the perimeter. Um, number two, cultivating local centers like Dunwoody Village in Georgetown. Um, and three, maintaining our neighborhoods. Um, these aren't in a priority order. These are really all equally important, very different areas, but all equally important to what Dunwoody is today. I'm going to very quickly go over what some of those main ideas are for each of these key places. In terms of key places for perimeter, um, there's a lot of details on this slide, but the big picture, the idea is that, you know, perimeter is very important to Dunwoody. It's a really important part of the tax base. It really allows a lot of the great quality of life aspects of Dunwoody to happen throughout the city. So there is a need to continue to invest there and support additional development as appropriate. In terms of key places, these are the smaller kind of commercial centers. Uh, so Dunwoody Village, uh, again, we heard a lot about a desire for a true downtown Dunwoody. Uh, this doesn't mean big skyscrapers or anything like that, but really saying, you know, there's some great parts about Dunwoody Village. We love the local businesses. We love sort of those gathering spaces. We want more of that. How do we get more of that in Dunwoody Village at a scale that is appropriate and feels right to us? We also talked a little bit about Winter's Chapel over to the east. Um, this is an area that, you know, I think some people feel like, you know, hasn't had a whole lot of attention paid to it. So we want to call it out a little bit more and say, hey, look, this is a really important kind of node for the community. It's an important spot on the east side of town. I really recognize the diversity there, the small businesses, and say, we want to keep that diversity. What we want to keep is a place that's friendly to entrepreneurs, but also help improve it particularly around the public realm and its walkability. We're also looking at Georgetown. Um, we are going to be doing a redevelopment plan specifically for this area that we'll look at it in greater detail. Um, Georgetown's unique in that it's got a really great location, but as of right now, there's not a lot of there, there. So really trying to look into some of those details going forward. Uh, we also looked at Jet Ferry. Um, you know, again, this is a very small sort of community center, but we wanted to make sure that we are putting some policies in place that really support that really nice neighborhood scale and make sure that that develops in a way that the community around it is supportive of. Um, and then the key places of the neighborhood. So this is the vast majority of Dunwoody. So, you know, again, what we've heard very clearly from folks is the desire to really preserve the residential character throughout existing subdivisions, um, considering residential infill as appropriate, um, enhancing safety on neighborhood roadways, uh, really making sure we have our stormwater regulations and our stream buffers correct, preserving that tree canopy. Um, and again, really trying to make sure that that beautiful green verdant neighborhood that's attracted a lot of folks here is maintained into the future. Um, one of the other things that we've done in this comprehensive plan, aside from focusing on these key places, is that we have taken a pretty different approach to, uh, land use planning than is in your current comprehensive plan. So I'm going to touch briefly on each of those main changes. Uh, the first biggest one is right now in your current plan, you have a future land use map, and you have a character area map, and it's confusing. So our thought was, you know, let's do one sort of composite map, one map to rule them all. So, um, what we've done is we've created a very simple, clear character area map with a very detailed land use table, and we'll go into those details in a couple of minutes. We, what we've also done too is within these character areas, we said, okay, we know that these local centers and perimeter are really important, but there's a big difference between the core of these areas and those transitional areas along the neighborhoods. And we really want to make sure that we're recognizing the differences between those, particularly in terms of development intensity. Um, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but one of the other big changes is establishing this sort of stoplight approach. And the basics of this is that the uses that are in green are considered appropriate. The uses that are yellow are appropriate with conditions, and the uses that are red are inappropriate. And what this means is if it's appropriate, that means generally this is a use that should be allowed in this area. Um, however, one thing that you'll notice as you go through the plan, there's a lot of those uses, uh, uses that have a little plus sign. What that plus sign indicates is through the U D O process, we're going to be establishing much more stringent guidelines around what those uses look and feel like. Uh, the yellow uses, these are appropriate with considerations. These are uses that in some circumstances, they might be okay, but they're going to require a lot more of a public process and a review process to make sure that they're going to be appropriate for the community. And again, the red uses are pretty much, you know what? This is not appropriate at all. We don't really want to consider this here. Um, we also looked a little bit about what we were calling neighborhood transition opportunities. Um, one thing we had heard early in the process was that, gosh, you know, we don't have a lot of different types of housing in Dunwoody. You know, we've got older folks who are aging in place and want to downsize, but there's really nowhere for people to go. Are there opportunities for different types of housing? So initially, we looked at a policy that kind of considers some of your major corridors. Is there potential there to have duplexes, smaller kind of missing middle type housing? Um, after we rolled this idea out, we got some feedback and we sort of rolled it back. So, um, one of the main changes that you'll see from this document that was not there in April was that it specifies special zoning permissions that are needed for kind of commercial, uh, neighborhood commercial uses in these areas. And it no longer applies to any parcel along these corridors that's over a certain size. It's really limited to these areas that are within a quarter mile of those local centers. Again, this is just an example of what some of this missing middle type housing looks like. These aren't giant apartment complexes. These are the basically single family scaled homes that have slightly larger numbers of units. So I want to start, uh, diving into the character area map. Um, again, one of the big changes from your current plan is only having a character area map and not having a future land use map. We did make some important changes, and I want to go over a few of these. Um, your current character area map has sort of a, I don't know if you can see my, my cursor there, but number eight, which is Ashford, it had that actually connected to perimeter, which meant that they had very similar policies. And to us, um, that was sort of a missed opportunity to be, because, you know, from our perspective, this Ashford area is significantly different than perimeter and needed to have its own set of policies. So that was one significant change. Um, we've also pulled out some specific character areas from the yellow, which is your suburban neighborhoods. Um, so for example, um, number ten here, this is your civic campuses. Um, we pulled that out as a specific area, you know, it, while these are important parts of the neighborhood, they are different, and we wanted to acknowledge that they were different. And we also splint, split Winter's Chapel into two, um, one being the Winter's Chapel area up here at number four, and then Peachtree Boulevard. So the way that this is set up is so that, you know, the character areas outlined is general geographies that have similar character throughout, and those stoplight charts talk about every single land use in this chart and designates them as appropriate, appropriate with considerations or not appropriate. So this is really going to be an important table for you all as the planning commission to get familiar with. So the land uses are fairly similar to what you have right now in your current plan, but with a couple of differences. We do have large lot residential, which is a very large amount of your suburban neighborhood character area. We have small lot residential. We have cottage courts. These are single unit, small houses, usually around some type of smaller courtyard. We have house scale plexes. Townhouses, multi-unit, senior assisted living, mixed use. Uh, I do want to point out mixed use is particularly talking about vertical mixed use in this case. We have local commercial white, local commercial medium, and local commercial heavy and regional commercial. I know there's a lot of commercial, uh, different designations, and the reason was, you know, one of the things that we heard throughout the process was that people are saying, you know, gosh, like, we really love our local businesses. We want more of that. So we wanted to have a little bit more control over saying, yes, these are, this is where we really want those local businesses. And these are some areas where we're a little more open to some of these other services where, you know, there may be not as appealing, but you still need them as a community. Um, one of the big defining factors of what category that use would fall into is sort of its orientation to cars. So for example, if it has a drive-through, it would be considered more of the local commercial medium use as opposed to that really tight walkable area that you would see more in like Dunwoody Village. Um, then we have a couple of land uses that are pretty much, um, allowed almost in every district. Uh, and sorry, in every character area, so that's public institutional, parks and open space, utilities and transportation. Um, I do want to note that you, you basically have to let utilities and transportation be everywhere. You can't say, sorry, no, we don't want this electrical substation here. It is where it is, and it needs to be there. So we, as a city, don't really have a lot of opportunity to say where those things can go. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take us through step by step, and I apologize, this is a little sloggy, but I do want to go through each of the character areas, talk through the stoplight chart, um, and really just sort of give you all a tour of the comprehensive plan, really. So I want to start with suburban neighborhoods, because I know that is an area that a lot of people feel very passionately about here in Dunwoody. So if you know in the stoplight chart here, appropriate, um, you know, this is very similar to your current policy. So you have large lot residential, small lot residential, public institutional, parks, open space, utilities and transportation. Now, what we have as appropriate with considerations is cottage courts, house scale plexes, townhouses, senior assisted living, local commercial white. Again, I want to, I want to point out a couple of these sort of asterisks that we have in the plan. Again, those plus signs mean that there are going to be additional use standards established through your U D O update. So that can be anything from design guidelines to any number of different aspects of what that development can look like. Um, and again, everything that's in the yellow, this is going to require an additional public vetting process for those uses to be able to occur in these areas. Um, what we show is inappropriate, and the red is multi-unit, mixed use, local commercial, medium and heavy, and regional commercial. Another thing I want to make sure that I, I point out about your comprehensive plan is that these stoplight charts really only talk about uses. They're not talking about scale and intensity. Where you talk about that in the comprehensive plan is sort of this area down here under. Where you talk about that in the comprehensive plan is sort of this area down here underneath the map. This is sort of what, you know, the planning nerds call a transect. So this is really talk, this talks about what is that level of intensity that we think is appropriate in these areas. And this matches your current policy. So suburban neighborhoods, we're saying, you know, one to three stories, regardless of these uses, regardless of where you are in that green or that yellow, one to three stories. Um, I won't go through all of this content for each of the character areas because it's quite a bit. And I know folks want to get home before midnight, but, um, we do have a number of different pieces of information for each of these character areas in your comprehensive plan. So we do, uh, specifically note, you know, what does this mean specifically for the update of the U D O? And what are the specific projects and initiatives that help implement that? Um, I do want to note that most of the projects and initiatives in your comprehensive plan, these are really pulling the projects and initiatives that have already been identified in lots of your other plans. So there's a few new ones in there, but it's really reflecting and kind of pulling together all of the great planning y'all have already done. So I want to move down to the perimeter core. Again, remember we're distinguishing between sort of the core areas of these big commercial centers or small commercial centers and the, the transitional areas again, because we really want to make sure that we're being sensitive towards the neighboring areas. So for the perimeter core, uh, we have quite a number of appropriate uses. Um, these are your, this is the area where your most intense uses are going to be allowed. In a lot of cases, this is going to be where they're only allowed. Uh, we have appropriate with consideration, some local commercial medium. Again, that's going to require additional review process. Uh, the reason for that is if this is the one area where we're going to say density is okay, we want to make sure that we're really using it for that purpose. Um, inappropriate uses, we're showing as large lot residential, small lot residential cottage court. Again, some of these smaller uses. And right now we have the intensity set at three to 16 stories, which is, um, pretty similar to what you have today in your current plan. Again, we have the page that talks about, you know, what do we implement the U D O with? Um, you know, again, a couple of things that we're saying is like really requires reactivation and walkable design. Don't just encourage it, getting a little stronger on the quality of the development that's happening in perimeter. In terms of that transition area, so again, this is that buffer between the main intense core and the neighborhoods. Um, again, you'll see that the, the intensity gets ratcheted way down, um, to two to six stories. Um, you know, we have less intense uses that are seen as appropriate. Again, we've got those little plus signs for those uses that are going to get additional use standards through the U D O update. Um, in terms of appropriate conditions, we have, we're talking about multi-unit here, local commercial, medium, heavy, and inappropriate as large law residential and small lot residential. And a lot of the sort of ancillary information about this one is very similar to the perimeter core. So moving up to Dunwoody Village, we have also identified the core area here, uh, with some of the land uses that are allowed. Uh, as you know, townhouses, senior assisted living, mixed use, local commercial, public institutional parks, open space, utilities, transportation. These are the types of uses that we as planners see as really important to have that walkable vibrant real downtown Dunwoody. Um, you can see here in the transect that we're showing two to five stories. Um, appropriate with considerations, uh, you'll see that some of these are bolded and have that kind of change symbol. Um, these were some of the lower intensity uses that had been in the red, but have been brought up to the yellow to signify that, you know, some of those intensities might be brought down a little bit for cottage courts, house scale plexes, multi-unit buildings and local commercial. Again, we have our recommendations for how to update the U D O and what some of those specific projects and initiatives are to implement the plan. In terms of the, uh, Dunwoody Village transition, um, you know, we have a much less intense version of what we're showing in the core. So we're talking about house scale plexes, townhouses, again, those have the, the cross to indicate that they'd have pretty significant, uh, use standards associated with them. Um, we have also moved up small lot residential cottage court into this from the previous plan. And one of the things that we've done since you all last saw the plan was we have ratcheted down the intensity in this area from up to four stories to down to three stories. And this was, uh, this was directly from feedback that we got through our workshop and through our steering committee. Uh, let's get, let's move on east to Winter's Chapel. Um, one thing that we had initially done was this was its own single area, but we ended up splitting it into a core and a transition area as well, because it did seem to be pretty different in what people felt comfortable with. So in this core area, which is where your existing kind of retail uses are, um, very large range of appropriate uses on that smaller side of the scale. Um, appropriate with considerations, small lot residential, local commercial medium. Um, and then we've moved local commercial heavy down into inappropriate and a fairly low scale at one to four stories. Looking at that transition area to the north, um, this is a very small area and about half of it is a cemetery. So again, not a lot of changes is expected here in general, but again, what's appropriate here are a lot of these smaller scale type residential uses, appropriate with considerations. It's multi-unit mixed use. But again, I want to, I want to point to the scale bar down here that really talks about one to three stories. Um, we had initially had this at four stories, but we've scaled this back from steering committee feedback and workshop feedback. So going down to Georgetown, uh, we, we ended up splitting up the Georgetown area. Um, so again, we, we have this core area, uh, that we have appropriate as, you know, sort of those more medium intensity type residential uses, appropriate with consideration, different commercial uses and multi, uh, multi-unit and regional commercial. Again, all of these yellow uses would require an additional review process. Um, and for the core up to two to 10 stories. Looking at the transition area, the, this is a, this is one of those areas where that that intensity goes way down to really try to respect the neighborhoods around it. So appropriate uses, we have a lot of those lower intensity residential uses, uh, local commercial light. Um, appropriate with, uh, considerations, multi-unit mixed use. So again, those would require that additional review process with the public. Um, but again, this is a one to three story, uh, intensity level. So those, those multi-unit buildings, I know some people think of them as like, oh my gosh, that's like a six-story apartment. I really want to make sure that folks are seeing what the scale is for each of these areas. And this is, this is a very low scale of one to three stories. Uh, moving a little bit to Georgetown east, um, we have again, a lot of sort of lower intensity residential uses as appropriate, appropriate considerations, uh, mixed use, regional commercial. Again, everything in the yellow would require an additional public process. Um, and we have the intensity level here as two to five stories, um, which is pretty reflective of what's there right now. Um, traveling up north to Jet Ferry, uh, we have quite a few appropriate uses here in the, in the stoplight chart. Um, and we recently moved up the local commercial medium use into here. Um, again, this is one to three stories. This is very similar to your policy now. Um, so even though we're showing that multi-unit as appropriate with considerations, what that means is multi-unit is okay if it's approved through that extra public process and if it's within that one to three story. So there's a lot of guardrails on that. All right. So let's talk a little bit about Ashford. Um, this is an area that's had a lot of discussion generated around it. Now again, remember in your current plan, this is actually attached to your perimeter character area. So this plan takes it and says, look, we recognize this is different and we want specific policies for this area. So in terms of the appropriate uses, um, again, we have all of our sort of lower scaled residential uses. Uh, we have local commercial light, um, in terms of appropriate with considerations, we have multi-unit mixed use plus regional commercial, small lot residential. Um, one thing that's changed since April is that, you know, initially mixed use was appropriate. So we've now knocked that down as to making sure that there's an extra process that goes into evaluating this. Um, we also have changed the scales of this, of this area. What we're showing right now is two to four stories, but up to five stories for a commercial. Um, one of the big challenges we've had with this area is that you already have some, some fairly, I would say some medium intensity commercial uses that are there. So you've already, there is this established commercial intensity there that's there, but the community has said, look, we're, we really don't want that matched as residential intensity if this redevelops. So we wanted to distinguish between, you know, we're okay with a little more intensity if it's commercial, but residential, we want to make sure that that's at a lower scale. All right. We're, we're, we're getting down to the last slides, I promise. So, uh, Peachtree Boulevard. Um, again, we have a lot of different uses as appropriate, um, particularly in the lower scaled residential uses, appropriate with consideration, all your kind of commercial types and inappropriate is large lot residential, small lot residential house scale plexes. And right now we're showing this as two to 10 stories. Um, one of the challenges in this area that we talked a lot about in our steering committee was that this is where a lot of your naturally occurring affordable housing is, and there is concern over displacement and gentrification. So that if this area were to redevelop in the future, we would want it to redevelop to a level where those units could be replaced at a level that's a little bit more affordable, which typically means a little bit more density. So, um, I'm going to go into a couple of these areas that were carved out of your suburban neighborhood use, uh, character areas that you currently have in your comprehensive plan. So this is the civic campus area. Um, yeah, not a whole lot that we're showing as appropriate here because again, this is sort of a special use area. So we're showing senior assisted living, public institutional parks, open space, utilities, transportation. Um, we are showing appropriate at with considerations for some of your smaller scaled residential uses. Um, the reason that this is showing up like this is we had some discussion over, you know, we don't think any of these uses are going to be redeveloping anytime soon, but in case they are, we want to have policies in place to make sure that they are redeveloping into something that the community is okay with and is that, and is at an appropriate scale. So we, we kind of set some initial guidelines up, but again, making sure that a lot of those potential redevelopment uses, if they do happen, would be going through that additional review process. Uh, we've also called out Brook Run Park as its own area. Um, this isn't to suggest that we're, we're going to allow all this new development at Brook Run Park, but the idea behind this was really to say, you know what? If there were going to be some very small kind of targeted commercial uses like, um, like, I don't know, like an ice cream stand or something like that, or like very small commercial scaled retail, that this would be allowed and supported in the comprehensive plan. So that was sort of the, the thinking behind this one. And then the waterworks area, again, not expecting a whole lot to happen here, but we wanted to recognize that this is a significantly different area than the areas around it. Um, again, public institutional parks, open space, utilities, transportation. Those are appropriate. Pretty much anything else not appropriate. And this is very unlikely to change. So that was a, a whirlwind tour of the character areas and the land use strategy. Um, again, a lot of this is high level and the intent for this is to set that stage for the U D O to come in and really apply that detail and make sure that you have the legal framework to be requiring and getting the type of development that you want here in Dunwoody. Um, I do want to touch on a couple of other components of the comprehensive plan, just so you're aware of them. Um, one is the community work program. Uh, this is a required element, uh, by the state. Essentially this is your to-do list as a community for the next five years. Uh, it includes all the projects and initiatives that are listed in your character area stuff, uh, character area chapters. Um, and includes mostly items from your other plans and projects. This community work program is organized by the R six plan elements to kind of help you look at the different types of projects that we're looking at. And that's really the last part of the plan that's getting finalized in order to transmit to the state. So again, I, I know I mentioned this upfront, but I do want to remind you all that when this draft comprehensive plan goes to city council, it's not going up for adoption. It's only going up for approval to be sent to the state for review. It would be the second time or I guess the third time technically that the council would see the plan that would be adoption, but that is not the next meeting. Um, I also want to, um, underscore that this comprehensive plan is really only part of a two-part planning process. Again, the main intent behind the comprehensive plan, it's not just to meet your state requirements, but to really make sure that we're casting a appropriate community supported vision for Dunwoody going forward, that can then be codified through your U D O. We have started on that process really looking at, you know, what is your U D O right now? What are some of the challenges you're having and really trying to get things set up so that the, the comprehensive plan and the U D O can talk to each other. Um, the goal for this U D O update is again, to really assess your existing code from both a technical and a policy perspective. Um, really removing some of those conflicts, make sure the document's internally consistent and easier to administer, making a more modern and user-friendly document. Uh, just a reminder, the comprehensive plan sets the vision policy, the code is what helps implement that. Um, a couple of things that we've seen in the code so far through our analysis, um, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to improve alignment and usability. Uh, there's a lot of opportunities to really allow increased housing options. And there's a lot of different opportunities to achieve some better outcomes, uh, development outcomes. So remember those uses I talked about with a little plus sign, that's really what these, this is talking about. Um, what are some of the changes to the zoning framework that you can expect in the U D O update? Um, again, we will be updating standards of the existing districts. Um, really trying to make sure that the quality of the development that you're getting is on par with what the community wants. Um, we'll probably be creating some new districts to align with comprehensive plan. Um, and potentially there will be amendments to the zoning map, but we don't know if that's going to be the case yet. Um, so again, uh, what we're doing right now is, uh, we have the draft comprehensive plan online. We've been receiving some, some comments from the public. We're going to keep reviewing those. We'll be presenting that updated draft to city council. Um, if city council approves it to get sent to the state, the state will then review it versus their standards, as will the regional commission. There might be a few additional changes here and there, and then ultimately your plan would be adopted. Your deadline for adopting the comprehensive plan, I believe is October 31st. Um, all of that is happening, but also the, uh, code assessment is ongoing. And once the comprehensive plan is fully done, we'll be fully focused on your U D O. And with that, uh, I know that was a lot of information very quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
All right. Thank you. I, I am sure we're going to have a bunch of questions along the way and we also want to make sure we, uh, uh, give anybody here who wants to speak on this time as well. So we'll probably, probably go ahead at this point and hear from staff or do we have, do we have any staff presentation on this? Okay. Okay, okay. Uh, what I'm seeing here is a variety of, uh, of comment cards. This is normally the time in our meetings where we, uh, take comment both for and against whatever the matter of business before us is. And so we're going to go ahead and do that. What I will tell you is, uh, it is our policy as a general rule to make sure every voice is heard. And so, uh, we're going to go in blocks of, uh, 10 minutes since we've got fours and againsts here. But we will extend as necessary and do our best to hear every voice. If somebody is speaking along the same lines as you are, and you wish to just say, I agree with so-and-so, we'd be happy to hear that. Again, we want to be mindful of time as well. So we'd urge you to, to do that, but bottom line is we want to make sure we hear everybody. So we're going to go ahead and, uh, open up the floor for comments in favor of this. And, and I understand this is a big document. Uh, so by speaking in favor, nobody's suggesting you have to adopt the whole document, but if you've got thoughts you want us to hear, that's what we're doing today. So four again, seems like a pretty, pretty blunt instrument with regard to what we're attempting to accomplish. But that's how we're going to, we're going to carve it up that way, but make sure you're heard. Okay. Uh, with that said, uh, Mr. Ziffer, would you care to step forward?
So, um, um, it's more than three minutes.
Uh, we, we've got 10 minutes blocked in favor of four. And when we hit that 10 minute point, uh, we have to vote to extend it or not. Uh, and so I would, uh, ask that you be mindful that there are other fours.
I just have two hats to put on now, but, um, so I have a real estate hat and a, we all serve the Cab County School Board representative too. And so I want to put on that hat too. But, um, so I'll just make this quick. I have something about, and I wanted to actually talk and speak in support of A D U development and also dense housing cottage courts. Just basically dense housing. I just have a quick statement I wanted to read. Um, but I've been in Dunwoody for about 19 years now and I'm here to speak in support of, um, updates that would allow more flexibility for the cottage courts and A D Us in our backyard, the backyard A D Us. And I think as we plan for Dunwoody's future, we need to think seriously about two things, about housing choices and family flexibility. We have lots of senior, we have lots of aging parents. We have lots of 20-year-olds who can't afford housing right now. And the draft comprehensive master plan points this out, you know, over and over again, that, you know, half of our renters in our city are cost burn, the average price or the median price in our neighborhoods right now are 540,000, which 20-year-olds and 30-year-olds can't afford right now. Page 56 of the master plan talks about, um, people want more housing types and more housing. And then also on page 62, there's a reference to a diversity of housing types too. So this is very consistent with the master plan and the discussion there. And all of this tells a story, you know, any young adult trying to return home from college needs a place to stay. And sometimes parents don't want them in their house. Uh, a newly hired teacher, police officer, a firefighter might want a place to live. And we have a hard time with police officers living in the city of Dunwoody. And, um, or, you know, quite frankly, a family caring for, um, an aging parent. And they all face the same challenge. It's a lack of local attainable and adaptable housing in, in our city. And A D Us are off, they offer practical, low-impact solutions. And they also let a couple live near family while saving for their own home. And they give an aging parent dignity, independence and proximity to loved ones, you know, without And they give an aging parent dignity, independence and proximity to loved ones, you know, without a six thousand dollar a month assisted living bill. And for a long time homeowners, they offer a long, a way to downsize an aging place without leaving the neighborhood they love, and A D Us offer that flexibility. Uh, the small backyard cottage, it might, uh, house a grandparent today, a college grad tomorrow, a teacher, police officer, a local worker. Who helps cover the mortgage for somebody who maybe can't quite afford to live here anymore. The units fit on existing lots and add gentle density to areas, and a lot of people don't even know they're there. And preserve neighborhood character we value while quietly adapting to evolving needs of families and honestly just bringing more people to Dunwoody and living here. Uh, but to unlock this, we need zoning that reflects the realities of two thousand twenty-five, not nineteen seventies when all our houses were built, or most of our houses were built nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies. And that means, you know, three main changes to current zoning, which is allow detached A D Us. Uh, permit non-family members to live in them. And, um, design reasonable standards that make a building A D U is truly viable. Uh, so Dunwoody's strong welcoming community, we value family opportunity and stability. So, you know, let's make sure our zoning reflects those values and gives our residents the freedom to meet life's changes without leaving, um, the place they love. And, um, now I put on my second hat, but I will say that, um, when I've read the master plan, comprehensive master plan, there was very, there were some conversations about schools, but not a lot. And let me just, uh, kind of be clear that, um, uh, the Cap County closeness and work. Dr. Horton says multiple times, we're closing thirty to forty schools over the next few years. And so we have three aging schools in Dunwoody right now. We have Vanderlin, Kingsley and Chestnut. And over the next few years, we're going to probably be building more Austins and Dunwoody elementaries and no four or five hundred capacity elementary schools. And so over the next, I'd say, seven to ten years, uh, Dunwoody is likely to get another larger elementary school. And, you know, from your standpoint, you should help us figure out where that school should go. And I just want to throw that out there for you to think about too. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, uh, Ms. Mitchell, please.
Thank you. You do a really good job.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Brien, a very good job.
I appreciate that.
Um, Commission, I hope you will recommend this comprehensive plan. I think it has a lot of value to it. I have two specific edits that I'd like you to consider. Edit one, optics are everything. On page forty-eight of the draft, I would like to recommend changing the community priorities in section three dot two, community agenda. And make, maintain our neighborhoods the top priority. As you can see, right now, we reviewed it. It is relegated to priority three, and I, I understand they're, they're not a priority, but if you're reading that plan, it looks like it's number three. Edit number two, on page one oh three, relating to the Ashford area. Change the land use for multi-unit and mixed use. That's apartments from appropriate with considerations, yellow to inappropriate or red. This area is low density. It's not near transit. It's not near highways. It's the gateway to our neighborhoods. It is surrounded by townhomes. Neighbors surrounding neighbors from Valley View, neighbors from Vernon Springs, neighbors from Dunwoody West. Uh, Trail Ridge, the branches, Dunwoody Station have all voiced opposition to this. Let's implement a community-supported vision for our group, for our community. Um, I ask you to edit this otherwise very strong plan to equip council and staff to engage with developers who will bring that type of low-density, owner-occupied variety of housing format that our neighbors want. We hear it again and again and again. Um, I ask you to please support these revisions, and again, I thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Um, uh, like Mr. Ziffer, I, uh, wanted to come and support and provide a perspective on A D Us and enhancing the regulations, availability and feasibility of A D Us. So my name is Jeff Smith. I am the owner of Cottage Smith. We are a, uh, licensed general contractor who specializes in building A D Us across all of metro Atlanta. And just to give you a, a glimpse into the level of popularity of A D Us that are growing across Atlanta. Um, in the last six months, we've had about eight hundred clients reach out to us and raise their hand and say, I am very interested in building an A D U, learning more about the feasibility. I didn't even know it was an option in my community. Of those eight hundred, about a hundred and fifty have resulted in meetings directly with citizens across all of metro Atlanta. I'd love to tell you that all one hundred and fifty decided to move forward, but that's not the case, right? So they all come to us with about four or five different challenges that they are looking to solve. Most of our clients actually come to us wanting to house an elderly parent. Of the current builds that we have across metro Atlanta, seventy-five percent of them are for an aging parent. They don't want to put them in an assisted living center because of cost, because of proximity. They want to keep them closest, you know, close family. Build a multi-generational, uh, property. The second one is the cost of housing is keeping young folks out of the market. And most many folks are coming to us, uh, wanting to house an older child, right? Letting that be the next step forward, the logical step forward as opposed to, you know, just living in their basement or living in an extra bedroom. A lot of folks come to us wanting extra space, right? Um, I read an industry, an interesting statistic that sixty percent of metro Atlanteans have a mortgage that begins with a three. And with mortgage rates at seven percent, moving up is very, very difficult and costly, right? Additionally, um, we have a lot of clients want to create a stream of income, renting out this A D U and creating that financial security. And then the last one is this concept of aging in place. Where folks have raised families in these large three, four thousand square foot homes, and they can no longer manage those homes, but they don't want to leave their community. So we're hearing more and more folks want to build an A D U in their backyard, live in that A D U and rent out the larger home or have their children raise their children in that home. Now, e- uh, every consumer, every client comes to us with one of these solutions. But those who actually move forward and adopt an A D U are the ones who begin to recognize the flexibility. Today, it could be a home for mom. Tomorrow, it could be a home for my son. Next week, it could be a, a rental income. And down the way, it could be an opportunity for me to age in place. So that level of flexibility is what ent- entices folks to move forward. And the zoning regulations that are more flexible to these, so allowing these to be detached, allowing the flexibility to put these in different locations provides that privacy. Um, allowing for those other than direct relatives or family members to live in them. This type of flexibility only increases the availability, popularity and adoption of A D Us. I hope that you will consider that as you move forward on this very important topic, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, tha- that represents the, uh, the end of the ten-minute period. Again, I, uh, want to make sure every voice is heard. Paul, would you, would you prefer we, we move to extend the time, or can we just, do we, we need to go ahead and do it formally? Would you prefer we do it formally? Okay, uh, Commission, what's your pleasure on extending the time? Can we get a, can we get a motion?
Motion to extend the time by five minutes.
All right, Commissioner Shen moves to extend by five. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brown seconds. We got a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, all in favor of extending by five minutes, raise your hand. All opposing, uh, like sign, all right, that carries unanimously. So we'll extend it by another five minutes. And what that means is folks on the, on the other side of the coin will have that, uh, same amount of time too. Uh, Guy Diligustina, please come forward. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, Guy Diligustina, live at Thousand at perimeter. Uh, keep this brief. Um, very sensible plan that we have here in front of us, very long, but also very sensible. A lot of compromises, right? If you look at the zoning and the maps, right, we're still keeping the city as mostly single-family residential. And I think one of the best compromises that fits well with, you know, the good comments from the colleagues here with, you know, A D U and cottage and houses is the transition zones. Which I think Ashford fits some of that, part of perimeter fits in some of that where we can say, hey, we're not going to build sixteen-story towers in these zones, but we should probably afford some more density, some more sensible density here. Um, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, things that might not see from the outside that there's increased density in that same four thousand square foot house. Um, and they will adapt to the time and the needs that we have. So, um, overall, just a very good sensible plan or good compromises there. And I think kind of puts Dunwoody, um, into what we want for the future. Um, different from a lot of people that comment in this place. I've been living in Dunwoody for five years now, and uh, I want to live here for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. I want to raise my two kids here. And these things, um, set the city in the pace that we should be for the next, uh, future. So appreciate all that and the good work done by everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else, uh, speaking for the current plan? And again, I know it's a strange line to draw on such a big effort, but is there anybody else for at this point? All right, seeing none, I've got a couple of comment cards that are, that are kind of characterized a- as against, but again, it may be against with modifications that could turn their hearts. Otherwise, I don't know, and I know you'll inform us. So, uh, first coming up, uh, Tom Taylor, please.
Tom Taylor, four nine two six, uh, Four Oaks Court, um, founding city councilman, former state representative. Um, I'm not necessarily against, I'm kind of on that situation where I've heard some good ideas and some that I don't really like, but um, want to go back just a little bit of history. When we formed the city and we started looking at this in two thousand and five, it was a reaction to a massive amount of apartment development down in here where you, there was, there was a loophole in the zoning with DeKalb County that you could take a five-story, um, office and convert it with almost nothing to, uh, apartments. So you had these buildings that you didn't have to really come before anybody, um, with a very quick process to do that. What that did at the time was flood our schools just because all that development, about ten thousand apartment units come in during that time. So that was what kind of drove the cityhood effort. I just want to put that in some context. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of good things of Susan Mitchell, you know, um, it maintained neighborhoods. I mean, that's, that's a critical thing to me, maintains tree canopy. We have a certain beauty here. That's why we're all here probably. Um, like to see owner occupied, uh, both in, you know, um, the single-family homes, but also in multifamily. I think that drives, um, a higher, um, more, less transience. Again, that affects the schools. Um, you know, the, the schools, uh, and, uh, like Mr. Ziffer said, more density, you're going to have to figure out, um, with the, the county school system. Where are you going to put those people? And, um, you can say, you know, the, like, look at oh, fifty-five above, we're only, we've got a lot of apartment complexes here. And a lot of our schools are over capacity right now. And again, with the three that, um, he mentioned closing, you've got to have some concurrence on where those people are going to end up and some buy-in from the community. They're not going to be bust a long way. I think that's what parents would, would like. Um, the affordable workforce and workforce housing, uh, I don't want to talk specifically down to the, the Peachtree Industrial, that, that quarter. If ten percent of, ten percent of Dunwoody's, um, population lives in three apartment complexes there. Um, they're very old. They've been here since the, the late sixties, early seventies, along that quarter. Um, some of them have been maintained, some have not. Um, I, I know one of the plans is to look at ten-story, up, up to ten stories, uh, with that. I mean, putting a lot of density in there, um, I'd like to see high-quality development. Uh, again, you've got to look at the number of, of people you're going to put in there. The type of people you're going to put in there, but with, you know, is this families, uh, which, you know, if it's workforce or affordable housing. Uh, again, you're going to have to look at school capacity for that. Um, one, one thing is the transit area development, development, like, uh, down in, in, in perimeter. Um, you know, I chaired MARTOC, which is MARTO Oversight Committee in the, uh, in the State House. And used to be a daily rider, uh, down, uh, when I commuted. Um, the transit rate development is a lot of times based on the fact that, oh, well, people will take public transportation, and that's just a fallacy. When I ride MARTO, um, it has to be three things. It's got to be clean. It's got to be on time, and it's got to be safe. And even now, and the whole time I was chairing that, it is none of the three. And the ridership is extremely low, and I expect that to be the same. Um, we've been working, uh, with some, um, I say we, with some clients of mine. And the, um, the police forces around here for the FIFA things next year. And one of the things we have from foreign people coming in here, it's, it's not coming from Europe or Asia. They're not used to a, a system like this that is not safe, not on time and, and, and not clean. Uh, so that is, uh, you know, when you look at that, it's like, well, we only need one parking space for this, uh, um, particular unit. Because every, you know, half the people here are going to take transportation, and that's just a fallacy. Um, the commercial tax base is one thing you need to take a look at here too, because, um, right now we have about a lot of the, um, office commercial here is about thirty to fifty percent non-occupied. But the owners are still having to pay that not for the, for that, and as that gets reevaluated, that commercial tax base might go down. Which you'd have to look at providing services for that. Uh, again, I just want to, I'm saying, um, you know, quality over quantity. Um, the densities really have to be monitored. The traffic, you know, we've got nowhere to go with, with this. When we formed Dunwoody, um, you know, we were locked in, unlike some cities that have formed since then that have place to grow like Stonecrest. Uh, we're locked into their borders on every side with e- either the county borders or city. There's nowhere to go out. So, uh, the tendency to go up is more, I just kind of worry about that. Again, quality over quantity. Um, and we've seen a, a lot of that. Uh, again, it puts a, and I'm looking at the ancillary parts of this, like providing public service. If you put ten thousand more units or two, five thousand more units i- in Dunwoody, you're going to have to provide service with police and those sort of things with that as, as well. Um, uh, the, the one thing that concerns me, and I, I'm not, I probably have not studied it enough, is, um, some of the infill, um, and I've got to study a little bit more, would be putting, taking the residential neighborhood, single-family residential, a little large lot. And allowing people, things like duplexes and things in that, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, with that as well. But generally, you know, I, I, I put against, but I'd like to see a lot more with that, but I wanted to register my concerns, uh, with you at that. Long time Dunwoody resident, like I said, I was on the, uh, five oh one C three. I was the vice president of the five oh one C three in form of the city. I'm well aware of what's going on here, but just wanted to have my speech.
Thank you. Uh, the final card that I have, uh, is for, uh, Wendy Taylor.
Thank you. Um, I've been a resident of Dunwoody for twenty-seven years almost. Uh, I live on the east side of Peeler. And, um, almost everything I was going to say has been already said, so I'm just going to run down my list and see what wasn't said. Um, first of all, the, there is a lack of real estate. And I'm glad about the, the idea of potentially elementary schools. Where is that going to be? There's certain things that we will want as a community and need that we need to go, hey, there's only maybe three spots in all of Dunwoody that might work for these potential things in the future. So just um, not going ahead with, um, general guidelines unless, until we've looked at certain things that might be needed that there's limited resources for. Um, the idea of the, the, or the fact that a lot of neighborhoods are multi, or sorry, um, single-family homes that are very large, that have more than three bedrooms and have only one or two people living in the home. Um, and I know that there is a law too, uh, that, that doesn't allow a lot of non-related people to live, be living in the same home. Um, so that, I, I do know that that happens, but, but, um, that's not supposed to happen. Anyway, uh, so the, the fact that there's so many people that would love to stay in Dunwoody, but don't need the home they have. Um, I think that there's a huge opportunity to actually turn those ho- homes over, make, I mean, there are no, very few homes are coming up for sale in some of these neighborhoods. You know, the, the years go by without any home turning over, and that's more, that's, w- once the home turns over, the, uh, amount of, uh, tax collected on that home goes up. There's a reason to put a family in there instead of a single person or a couple. And, um, I think that the opportunity here is to look and say, okay, where do these folks who want to stay in Dunwoody, where do they go? How do we keep? How do we, we get them to say, hey, there's a good option here. I'll move out of my four thousand square foot home. Um, so that, that is an opportunity. Um, But those people are very interested in owner, they're they're going to be interested in investing their money in another home here. So not necessarily renting. Um because. So I I think the majority of people that are fifty-five and over probably would want to do that. Um. Uh also, just. Uh there is no, because there's so few of these properties that. Um are coming up for the for rezoning that. That we need to, I think we should not let the guidelines, let the guidelines be guidelines, but actually. When a property that is one of a kind in Dunwoody. Comes up, we need to a- actually have a process where we we look and stand back and say, okay, wait. It are they do what are the specifics that we want to consider for this property as opposed to just just using the guidelines? The guidelines are great, but we might know more information at the point that that comes up. And we might know that, hey, there's an elementary school that we might need in in the future. You know, we need to know. Um we need to not use this as a um carte blanche for any. Any. Any use that's on that list, just because it's on that list. Um so I do like all the, I mean, I I want to applaud all the work that's gone into into this um. This plan. It's just tremendous and it's it's I can't I can't imagine. Doing it in any clearer way than they've that they've been doing it. I did see one mistake, so I'm gonna get to you, but but. Man, um it 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 is very, very a good, a wonderful start. And although I said, hey, I'm again against unless there's a change or two made. It is a wonderful plan and um I do think that. Um provided there are a few changes that we heard about, actually from the people that were for the plan, so. Um uh I do think that we should go ahead with the plan and um. Uh a a doc or um you're not adopting it, sorry, what was the recommending? Um but I do think that the uh there do, there does need to be a few changes and and the emphasis being on. It being a guideline and not carte blanche for any any use or any development, even if it's on the um. On the list. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul, do we have any more time? More importantly, do we have any more people that wish to speak, I guess?
We're running out of people. Uh we have three, three and a half, three and a half minutes left.
Okay, uh is is there anybody else who wishes to speak or wishes to share thoughts with us about uh what they've seen or what they've heard? If we have, we've got, we've got the time, if you're interested in sharing more.
Another thought, if when we look to go up in some of these things, because there's almost nowhere to go out in some places like this. I'd like to look at more like the Manhattan, which was built two thousand and six, uh but that's maintained its value in a great way. Um. You know, it's a two thousand and six build. Your average twelve hundred square foot um condo in there is about six, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It still maintains now. Uh that's quality and you're gonna get, I think that's. More what I'd like to see if we go up, and I don't think we're going to see another twenty-five story building here, but that's just another thought that I had. That's people that are selling a house to downsize, that are getting something comparable in the same price range with what they're living in now.
Is that actually? Come on up.
One concern I have is that um we don't have any money set aside um for. The a disaster such as stormwater or water or sewer uh as a city, I think that we really need to look to our Brookhaven neighbors. Who are dealing with that right now or others and say, hey. Um if we add more impervious surface. Or um if we add more units, um we still haven't, our aging system is definitely. Uh there's a lot downstream and I would hate for um us to approve. What looks like a wonderful building and have that. You know, above ground, everything looks great, but we haven't um invested in the infrastructure that would. Mean that that's not going to cause a disaster or or uh. More repairs later on, so it it everything ages and we do need to take some lessons from our. From Atlanta and Brookhaven and those other um locations that are are definitely suffering the. The consequences of not having the infrastructure. To to um or it's it's. It's aged and and they need to repair it and expensive.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Uh at at this point, uh what we'd like to do. Is move forward with uh with commission questions and discussion and and ultimately, I mean, I think what our goal is here tonight is to uh. To provide a motion that'll that'll allow this to to move forward, but with any modifications that we see fit or any recommendations for consideration. Again. We're not necessarily a modifying body, we're a recommending body. The idea is to to have voices heard and make sure that we. Give the best work product we can going forward. So uh at at this time, uh. I think it uh it makes sense to uh to go ahead and start uh on my right with with Commissioner Wallach and we'll just. We'll work our way right to left with with questions and discussions, and then I'll ask the team to. Form a motion or or a motion with a series of qualifications, uh should that be needed. Oh, man. Oh, you're just available for questions? You're great. Thank you. Excellent. Glad you're there. Perfect. Uh so Commissioner Wallach, I'll uh I'll hand it over to you.
All right, well, I guess I've just jotted down a few questions. We we heard some serious discussion about these ADUs. Which of our categories do they fit into? Or or are they provided for at all?
So the plan is quiet on ADUs as of right now. Um this was an area that we did not hear a lot of consensus on. Throughout the planning process for the comprehensive plan. So um our thought was frankly to keep that conversation for the U D O portion of the plan. So right now it is not addressed directly in the comprehensive plan.
As a follow-up to that, in places that permit ADUs. Um are there usually only one ADU per per property we or could could someone conceivably have, you know? A couple or three different ADU outbuildings?
Like an ADU compound.
Well, practically, yes.
So um I'll let I'll let Richard and Paul speak to the what's in Dunwoody right now, but other communities, it really varies. So um. One of the trends in cer- certain communities is to allow up to two ADUs in single family zones. Um. I would say most communities aren't quite ready for that. Um and one ADU is to is more typical right now, but some of the most progressive are looking at two by allow by right.
In the few places that permit multiple ADUs, is it structured such that it depends on lot size?
Yeah, so usually what happens is that for an ADU to be built, it still has to meet all of the different lot requirements. So you just because you want an ADU doesn't mean you can go into your your setbacks or anything like that. So it still must. Maintain your your current zoning districts setbacks.
I don't think I asked the question very well.
Okay.
Um. Even uh re- recognizing all of the setbacks and all of that. Is it generally a a distinction between, you know, you've got a half acre. And you want one ADU, but you've got three quarters. And because it's a bigger lot in general, you can add the second one. Or does it not get that specific?
It it does, but it really depends on all of the other different requirements in that district. So for example, if there's different um pervy surface requirements, different, you know. Lot square footages, different, uh you know, the tree ordinance could also come into play. So it really depends on what that community's policies are and how all those different design requirements interact on that specific parcel. And I know that's a very unsatisfying answer, but.
It's not unsatisfying. It's just what it is. Um. The the second thing that I've made a note about is Mr. Taylor told us a moment ago that the people in one particular. Uh complex or uh building are people who sold out of the big houses and moved in there. And I wonder if there's. If there's any data or anything that supports that assertion, whether a survey's been conducted, whether um. You know, or whether it's just kind of anecdotal.
We we actually looked at this, um we don't have it to that level of detail. But um we looked at this um about a year ago, both on based on school enrollment data. In Dunwoody and also in Alpharetta for comparison's sake. In buildings like this, we looked at the Manhattan specifically as sort of an example for. Um a high-rise condominium building and I want to say there were three school age children. Living in that building that were enrolled in DeKalb, in DeKalb County Schools. So this is several hundred units and there were three children living in there. So. It probably is safe to say that it skews, that it does skew older.
Yeah, that I appreciate that, but that wasn't exactly where I was going with this. The assertion was made. That it was older, I think the insinuation was wealthier people in. Who had been in Dunwoody for a long period of time and were downsizing. Moving into this particular situation. And I want to know if that's supported by anything or whether that's just anecdotal.
No, I I I think that's anecdotal. We don't have, we don't have systematic data for that.
Okay, that's okay. Um. As well as saying here. Actually, I think that's all I've got for the moment.
Okay, then I guess I'll go. Um so this is probably a little sluggish, as you like to say, but I have some questions around the Ashford and then the Georgetown. Um believe it's west. Um so first of all, with Ashford, where you have regional commercial. Listed as appropriate. And I'm a little confused about that because. That to me speaks more perimeter. And so I'm trying to understand, there's been a lot of discussion about this area. Wanting it to be appropriate from a sense of being a transitional. Why we would allow regional commercial there?
Sure. So uh if my memory serves on that particular question, it's a reflection more that you have already some like fairly regional serving office buildings already there. It's not to say like, hey, let's put a big Costco here for regional serving retail. But it's right now serving a an office purpose that reaches beyond sort of the Dunwoody area. So it's more reflective of the current land uses that are there. At least that's my memory of that discussion.
Okay, I guess my my question would be. Is there some sort of a way to grandfather that in with the that intention that we want to see? Everything else that's in green instead there because. I don't know that we want to encourage more regional commercial in that area. It's more about grandfathering in folks that are already there, which we should.
Right. So and and that's an important distinction, too, right? In that, you know, the uses that are currently there are, you know, the comp plan doesn't change that, right? So one option would be to move that use into red if the feedback from the community and you all is to say, you know, we don't want any of that in the future. Let's just make that very clear and put it in red. So that is an option that's available.
Okay, great. Um I think that that would be one of my comments or recommendations. Um and I guess the second, the secondary question to that is looking at Georgetown West, which is also transition. And there we have it as inappropriate to have regional commercial. And there's regional commercial grandfathered in there as well.
In the transition area for Georgetown West, not the core. So I think the sense for that one was that we wanted to be very sensitive to a lot of the surrounding single family neighborhoods. And and if we're going to have regional commercial in that area, it would be the Georgetown core, not that transitional area where that would be attracting all that traffic.
Sure, I think what um I'm trying to say though is if we're going to treat treat that transition area that way, then we should treat this transition area that way. As well, we should be a little bit more consistent, um from my opinion. Um and I don't think having living close to there that we need more intensity there. So I I would, I definitely agree with not having regional commercial there. Um the other one that I wanted to talk about that did come up, which I thought was a very good point, um was around Peachtree Boulevard. And the idea of having stories up to ten. Um from what I can tell and what I can remember from driving by there right now, they're about three to four stories. Do you, is that accurate? Yeah, yeah. Um so I guess I'm trying to understand, I mean, I guess. I get we want to have more affordable housing. That is very important to me as well, especially when we're talking about. Aging residents or gosh, I remember buying my townhouse here on Mountain Burn and I could not buy that now. So you know, having a way at entry points, but why would we go up to ten stories there?
No, that is a great question. So the thinking behind that is that if we want to maintain some semblance of affordability in that area, if that area were to redevelop. To redevelop it, that same three to four stories, if I'm a developer, that's not going to pencil out for me to have affordable units. Those are going to be market rate. And all the folks that are currently living there would not be able to afford that sort of same size unit in a brand new building. So in order to keep some level of affordability. And make enable that to pencil out for developer, that additional density is needed to have those additional additional units to provide that revenue. So from a scale perspective, yes, that is a much different scale than is there currently, but that was the compromise made to try to maintain some semblance of affordability in that area.
Got it. Okay. I just think that that would very much so change the feel of that neighborhood and that corridor. And while I understand that I almost. Would rather see the house scale plexes there than a ten-story apartment building. Especially if we're talking about wanting to, I like the point um that was made around allowing for more owner occupied. I think that's going to encourage that. Um and I don't know why we wouldn't. I just, I think that that's a lot. I just think that that's a lot for where that is.
It is a, it is a significant increase in density. That's absolutely correct. Um I will say that if you were again to take those three to four story buildings and redevelop those into duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. Those units could not rent out at an affordable price point and still pencil out for that developer. So again, the really, the only way that we see to maintain affordability is to go more dense.
Okay, and to that that point, where else do you see that affordability coming in here in these areas? Is it really just? Jet Ferry and Winter's Chapel? Or are there other areas that we've kind of identified to allow for the affordability for our civil servants and so forth?
Sure. So those are, those are both areas that we had identified. Um I think again, looking at um some of the areas around perimeter where we were allowing more density there. Um. One of the thoughts behind that neighborhood policy for those neighborhood transition areas where a quarter mile around these local centers, I'll allowing those duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. They're not going to be as affordable as those units currently off of Peachtree and Dusserial are now, but it does give you a little bit more diversity of housing types. So. Again, it kind of goes back to that compromise that we were trying to strike between, you know, knowing that the community really wants to maintain the the scale and the feeling of existing neighborhoods, but also try to find those. Those opportunities here and there to expand the diversity of housing types. So it's very modest is the short answer.
Okay. Uh I only have two more questions left. Um I think that.
But before you go forward, you've you've really hit a couple of very important things. As we go across the dais here. We've got some specialized knowledge and I'm sorry to interrupt. I would, if if you believe you feel strongly enough about altering the plan that you want to participate in the motion or create it. Please go ahead and begin putting some words, and I'm going to encourage everybody to do that. If you believe that you've got a change you want to propose, I'm going to urge you to do that so that we can all put all of our changes together. For whatever we do. So thank you. Please continue.
Of course, thank you. Um I wanted to talk a little bit about the suburban neighborhood and what was listed as appropriate with considerations. Um when we're talking about things like townhouses and cottage courts. Um and even senior assisted living, why they are with considerations versus being encouraged um in green. When I think about some of our neighboring communities, those things would probably fall into green. And if we want to um redevelop and promote places for. You know, if I think about what would I want to purchase if I'm a thirty-year-old, right? Like it's a townhouse or it's a cottage court. Why were they put into appropriate with considerations for suburban?
So one of the things that we heard very clearly from folks is they wanted neighborhoods to stay the same as much as possible. So um you. If to us, what we heard from that was that we want to maintain that single family character in our neighborhoods. So again, we heard that very consistently and to us to suggest. So again, we heard that very consistently and to us to suggest putting townhouse, houses and senior assisted living centers in those neighborhoods. That would be very much against a lot of the feedback that we were hearing. So again, to strike that balance between we want. More housing diversity, we want those different housing options, we put it in that yellow area. Of appropriate with consideration specifically to address those areas around like the quarter mile around the local centers. That those were the areas that we said, okay, if we're going to allow a little bit more to happen. In the suburban areas, we think those are the most appropriate because you're closest to more services. So again, it was it was really community feedback that we're trying to listen to and be sensitive towards that. Single-family residential was the character people want.
And so if we're talking about the considerations, am I correct? And those aren't really outlines yet, like what that would be, or is that coming up in the next part of the U D O like?
So I I think in the case of the suburban neighborhoods where the where those uses are listed, I believe in that chart, it actually says uh must meet neighborhood transition standards. And that neighborhood transition piece, that's right with the suburban um neighborhood character area. Policy, I believe, that's where we talk about within a quarter mile. Of those local centers along corridors for parcels that front the corridors. That is specifically where those are allowed. So I do feel like it's fairly clear in the document. What we're talking about and that's circumstance.
Okay, I don't think that I have an answer for it, but I would be just challenge the other commissioners to think about it as well. Like I think the point that we're hearing about us being. We are landlocked, right, on other all sides. Are we providing enough? Flexibility within the suburban neighborhood to be able to grow and to meet the needs that will be coming up within our neighborhoods. I don't consider a townhome not to be a single-family home. I mean, I get what we're defining as a single-family home, but. Um, it's not a duplex. So to me, that is. I grew up in a rural home, that's a single-family home to me. So I just think it would be worth consideration. Um, to think about that and are we limiting ourselves by not allowing some of those things to get developed as we move forward? Um, and the last piece, I guess, is I'm trying to understand how, you know, one of the things that we have on here is cultivating local centers. And how we're doing that in some of these other areas that don't really have a local center. So again, if we're thinking about Winter's Chapel or Jet Ferry. How does the plan cultivate a center based off of what's listed as land use?
Sure, so the main part of that is really shifting the land use policy to direct those uses. So directing that local commercial business area into those areas. So yes, you're right, the focus is land use. There are some um different projects and initiatives that also support that. So for example, enhanced walkability, Winter's Chapel and Jet Ferry. So there are certain policies with that. I do think part of the U D O will also be looking at some of those details and say, okay, if this is really the type of development we want in these areas. What are the districts that are going to be most appropriate to allow that development to happen there?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. That's it.
Sounds like a plan. Oh, I've just been informed that Commissioner Brown has a uh. Has a time by which he has to leave. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, but I'm doing okay.
Well, Com- Commissioner Shannon insists. So if you're, if you're able to, we'd we'd love to have that happen.
I got you.
Um, I think I want to start off with just a little bit of uh. Well, maybe two clarifications. First, when we're recommending this plan move on tonight when we make a motion. Um, we've still got a number of checkpoints along the way, right? You said council is going to read it a couple of times, it's going to go. Um, through another process, you guys are going to continue to. Work on it along the way to address. Comments that you hear tonight and comments from the public that may be forthcoming and things like that, correct?
Sure, so um the way the process will go is after tonight, we'll hear what you all have to say, we'll talk to Richard and Paul. And we'll say, okay, what are the changes we want to make right now before even sending this to council based off of the feedback tonight? The council will then take the plan and say, yes, we approve sending it to D C A for their review. Uh, the D C A would, D C A's Department of Community Affairs, uh, so that's a state-level organization. So they have, I believe, five to six weeks to make their review and to send their comments back. Now, in that period, you can still continue to make changes, but if there are substantive changes, you're supposed to kind of go back and have that public hearing. Again, so that the public is made aware of any substantive changes. If there was a significant change to your character area map, for example, that would kind of trigger. A restart of the public hearing. So short answer, this is not set in stone.
Right.
But you don't want to be making very significant large changes to your document after you submit it to D C A.
Yes, understood. And I think it also helps us with our. Making a motion tonight that I don't think we have to feel too much pressure to have. A long list of specific changes. It's more a good faith effort that you'll take into consideration. Our comments and recommendations that we speak on tonight.
That's my understanding, yes.
Um, other clarification is um just a little more about um how the. Green and the yellow are treated because we have. Some different circumstances like. There's existing zoning versus what somebody may be requesting in a rezoning. So if if you're still going for a rezoning, but it lands in the green category. What does that mean in terms of process versus yellow, which I assume? In order to get a rezoning, that's going to come back to our body, a planning commission. Uh, and we're going to be seeing those and reviewing it like we do normally before. We approve anything that's appropriate with conditions.
Right, so this comes into play when a property, property owner wants to go for a rezoning, right? Does it, as of right now, this is not affecting any existing zoning. If there are going to be zoning changes, that would happen during the U D O process. Um, so what this, what this, the way this would work is that, you know, if I'm a property owner, I say, hey, I want to, you know, this is my property location, this is the character area I'm in. I want to change it to one of these land uses, then you as a planning commission would say, okay, the comprehensive plan says this is a green use, which means it is appropriate. So that to me, if I, if I were in your shoes, your shoes would signal, okay, this is in alignment with the comprehensive plan, we would recommend to approve that. Now, if it's yellow, that means, you know, there's certain things about this that need to be considered more carefully. Usually, I think in the cases where things are in yellow, it's about scale, it's about compatibility, it's about sort of how the community feels about it. So that is that additional process that they would have to go through.
Right, and I I just think it's important to. For everybody to understand that even if it's in green, if it requires a rezoning, it's still got to come back through us. It's just a clearer path that this is absolutely what the community wants. So green and yellow will come to us if it's any kind of rezoning, we just have more considerations. More of a gray area when it comes to those um those things that are listed in yellow.
Correct, the the whole intent is to try to provide you all with better direction and to provide better transparency to folks on sort of what are my chances at getting the use.
Okay, thank you. Um, going to the A D U. Um. Question that's come up and with the public comments and with Alex earlier, um. I I think I saw that there's, I know the. Comp plan is somewhat silent on it, but it looked like there's a rec, a specific recommendation to go forward with some type of study for A D Us. Um, as as part of that work plan, correct?
I believe so. Um, I I do think the intent is to look at the issue more closely during the U D O update process.
And I I think that's pretty appropriate because I think that. Requires a study that in and of itself is almost as big as the comp plan, so that seems like a good way to to move forward. I do think. It'd be good to look at that, what other communities are doing, and then figure out how we have a path forward for that. Um. The. You mentioned earlier the uh Georgetown redevelopment area, there's going to be a. A further study on that area, so what? I guess what will that look at? And how will that interact with the the comp plan? So like, will it? Kind of supersede or append the comp plan once that's complete, or how how will that work?
Yeah, so the intention of the Georgetown plan is to drill down into more detail from the comprehensive plan. So you already have uh more detailed studies for some of your centers such as Dunwoody Village, such as perimeter. So the intent behind the Georgetown plan is say, look, we know it, we do have some some pretty critical redevelopment opportunities here. We know that those are of interest right now. We want to make sure that we are casting a very clear vision for what we as a community. Want out of that, and that's a, that's the level of detail that goes beyond the comprehensive plan. So the intent is to do that plan over the next three to four months. And to not only append that as part of the comprehensive plan, but the bigger picture of that is to make sure that that plan is in place. So that that too gets codified during the U D O process and that the U D O is accurately reflecting that vision and level of detail that the comp plan can't really address.
Thank you. Um, and then I, one of the speakers earlier mentioned uh stormwater and impervious. Surface standards and things like that, and my assumption is that is not really a comp plan thing, that will be something that will be looked at and addressed in the U D O. Process, okay. Um. I think. Oh, um. The issue that's come up about the maintaining neighborhoods as the. You know, number one priority versus. Three, which it's not really a priority, it's just the order that it happens to come in, uh but I assume. Just for sake of optics, um, you know, that it it could easily be revised where that comes first and then kind of reorder the the draft. That would not be a big deal.
No, not at all. Very easy change.
All right. Okay, um. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mister Shannon, are you ready? Uh, I, at uh at around eight P M, I'm going to go ahead and call about a five or seven-minute recess, everybody, just so we can take a break, but uh. You'd like to go ahead and proceed, and if we we need more time, we'll. Do it after the gap.
Yeah, I wanted to also kind of dispel some misinformation I've seen online. Um. The comp plan doesn't just automatically rezone everything like. To Commissioner Brown's point, um, is something currently is zoned, whatever it is, and. If it's, you know, appropriate or appropriate with conditions and appropriate, but given the process, it would still trigger rezoning. It still goes through. Yeah. Um, and I guess some of the like appropriate with conditions, like the yellow part of the stoplight. That's something that will get worked out in the U D O process if it requires rezoning or a slump or just permitting.
Most cases, it would probably be a slump. But yes, that was the intent for the yellow in most cases.
And then, yeah, it's good to hear that the A D Us are still something that we're thinking about. I know that is something our steering committee talked about. Um. And that there's been mixed use with other communities of whether it's um. Successfully been adopted or implemented, um, and it's good to hear the um, the one public comment that talked about that as well. Of of what those could look like and who's usually living in them. Um. I did have a couple of questions about um the perimeter core and transition areas. Um. So I guess to reiterate, like Ashford got broken away, it's a new character area, the intensity. Is two to four stories. Perimeter transition is two to six stories and perimeter core is three to sixteen stories. Um. And in the three to sixteen stories. Is there no requirement for being adjacent to residential, like? If there's residential in the transition area, but it's not single-family. It could still be, you could have like. A three-story condo or townhome or duplex or something next to a sixteen-story. Building.
Yes, so yeah, the um, the transition area was much more focused towards the single-family neighborhoods and making sure that there is an appropriate sort of step-down of intensities. So if in the core you have something in sixteen stories, and if in the transition you have sort of a four to five-story building. My interpretation is that that would be appropriate based off of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I guess there's existing cases where there's like a three-story next to like a sixteen-story. Um. So there, there's not really that step-down transition happening, um, and so I would hope that's something that can get explored in. The U D O process of kind of what, in general, what that transitional um areas are. Um, not just in the perimeter area, but all of the, and not just the buffer to single-family, but the buffer to just residential in general. Um. And I also was wondering about the perimeter core and transition um outline. And like, why's the? I guess, why does it not go to like? There's the little corner um where like the embassy suites are and that's still considered core. And not transitional, like all the way along.
Sure, we worked on this very closely, I might, I might defer to Paul on on that.
And not all the way along, like Meadow Lane up to perimeter. Um.
So we we tried with this, so from an urban design standpoint. Um, for some of it is, we, right now, we have most things cut off at a street, but the street is the boundary. From an urban design standpoint, that's not a preferred choice. Um. The better choice is to have both sides of the street be of the same, so you don't have on one side, you can go three stories high on the other, you can do sixteen. Um, or something like that, that counts towards some of it. Um, I think that's for that segment up on Meadow Lane. That's the reason for that.
And similarly for perimeter center east, there's like.
Yeah, so we we tried to extend the core area across Ashford Dunwoody Road. So that Ashford Dunwoody Road can fulfill that function sort of as the main street of perimeter center. Um, down the road with um. With uh uses on both sides, yeah.
Um. And I guess with that, with perimeter core and perimeter transition and just. Um, perimeter being one of the goals and visions set by the community agenda. I'm wondering why in the community work plan there isn't um. An action, there are some actions within the perimeter, um, C I D and all of that at a city. Um, but there's nothing similar to. The local centers of coordinating with our neighboring cities. Um, even though perimeter is not called out as a local center. There's not like an action item within the community work plan to say. The city of Dunwoody should coordinate with Sandy Springs for a vision for the perimeter area. Um, particularly for. You know, the Hammond Drive, like near State Farm, near um the the Regal and Marta, Sandy Springs, Marta, kind of that area of where the. County border is um and the city border is, that that is. Just as important, I guess, as our eastern border. Um.
Sure, and I think that's something that we could very easily add into the plan.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron.
Um. I just want to add my thanks to all of you, to the staff and to your team and to um our commissioners who are on the steering committee. I mean, this is a lot of work and um it shows that you all have thought about it very carefully, and so as a citizen, I truly appreciate that, so thank you. Um. On the question of the A D Us and just, I learned this term today. And so for anyone who doesn't want to have to ask the question, they're accessory dwelling units, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And are those only, would those only be in the suburban? Um. Character area?
So those, those would be probably in any area with, um, you could do probably small lot residential or a large lot residential. Um, those are typically where you would see an A D U, um. You know, typically they're in sort of the cottage, the greeny flats, sometimes they are attached, sometimes they're detached, but it would be very unusual to see an A D U attached to like a townhouse or that sort of thing. So it's really more, it would, it would probably travel more with the land use versus the character area.
Okay. Um, what is the southern border of the Ashford? Um, neighborhood?
I feel like this is like comp plan trivia, um.
So we we have it here, so it includes um, it includes City Hall. Um. And so City Hall is the very southern boundary. And then crossing uh crossing Ashford and Woody does not include. The single-family uh, the single-family uh homes on Valley View. But it includes that apartment complex right behind. So southern boundary is the apartment complex um and City Hall.
Okay. All right, thanks. Um, and then. Just to make sure. I understand the transition opportunities that you talk about on page eighty. Um, it mentions the only commercial nodes that this policy applies to are perimeter, Dunwoody Village, Jet Ferry, Georgetown West and Winter's Chapel. And all perimeter, Dunwoody Village, Georgetown West. And all perimeter, Dunwoodie Village, Georgetown West and Winter's, I thought I understood it. And those perimeter, Dunwoodie Village, Georgetown West and Winter's Chapel all have a core and a transition. But Jet Ferry doesn't. So how does the transition opportunity apply to the Jet Ferry?
Sure. So the intent behind that transition area, um, so it's a little confusing because with the, there's the character area transitions. There's there's the core and the transition, right? And those are probably the character areas. But then there's the neighborhood transition policy that says within a quarter mile of that edge of whatever that local center is, within a quarter mile, if you have a parcel that fronts the road, that's, you know, not inward facing towards a subdivision, you can have an appropriate with considerations um, sort of additional bump in the type of housing that you could build or potentially commercial residential. So that could be duplex, triplex. So it's really, it's a pretty limited amount of parcels. So it's really, it's really just a quarter mile for only parcels directly facing the corridor from the edge of all of those local centers that are mentioned.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
It's confusing.
No, it's all right. You you all, you all know the language. I'm just trying to make sure I understand it. Um, thank you. Those are my only questions.
Commissioner Gordon.
Okay, I have a comment about the um, ten-story multi-use on Peachtree Boulevard.
Sure.
And I just wanted to point out, I'm pretty sure there are ten-story multi-use buildings just a little bit further south. So, I don't know, it didn't seem to be an issue in my mind. And I'm hearing a lot of contradictions when it comes to affordable housing and condos and townhouses. Like, you know, we all want people to be able to stay in Dunwoodie or move back to Dunwoodie after college, but people don't seem to want townhouses and condos that are affordable. I mean, I heard somebody say like six hundred thousand dollar condos. And to me, that's just a lot of contradiction. So I don't understand how that's gonna work. Um, so there are more concerns than questions, but those are my thoughts.
So one one note on sort of the the condos and townhomes piece. Right now, you know, the real estate market would not produce affordable townhomes and condos. You know, if I'm a developer, I'm coming and building that product here and down. We, there's no way that will be affordable without significant subsidy. So that just wouldn't happen. I think for any new affordable housing to be built, it has to be very small footprint units at high densities um, and or heavily subsidized. So now the other, I think the other important parts mentioned is with the A D U's. Um, that is, I think, a really sound strategy to look at because it does provide that very small footprint type home for a lot of different types of folks. And it is at a smaller price point than, you know, a new condo or a new townhome. Uh, I also think it's at a scale that's appropriate for Dunway. But again, kind of like you've heard contradictions, we've heard um, different viewpoints from the community. There are folks who are very interested in having more diversity of housing in Dunway, and there's folks who are not. So again, we tried to strike that balance by saying we recognizing this area, it's already affordable. We don't want to lose sort of our our last area of naturally affordable housing. But also recognizing that the only type of housing that could get built that would be affordable would be pretty high-density homes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. We hear a lot, I'm gonna hop around a little bit. So uh, yeah, we've we've hit some of my questions and I wanna address a couple others. We hear a lot about uh, you know, steering toward owner-occupied versus rental uh, sort of properties. Uh, how does this document do it? Uh, help me understand how this differentiates because I'm seeing uh, type of development, but not necessarily the differentiator there. And is that something that?
Sure. So um, I would say that's intentional, that the document does not directly address that. Um, largely, it puts communities in sort of a legally questionable position to say, we want owner-occupied versus rental. Um, it's it's a practice that we as planners do not recommend you do because it's it's a very gray murky area that frankly, the city could get sued over if you're just saying we are only allowing owner-occupied housing. It's it's a very dicey proposition and it's not one that we recommend. So we are focusing very much on what are the housing product types? And we are very purposely trying to stay ownership agnostic.
Is there a way that a document like this can be crafted in such a way to do it without saying it? And has that been done?
So I think if you want to encourage owner occupancy, you can have certain policies in place to say, we want to, you know, as the city of Dunwoodie, we want to make it easier for people to own their own homes. So some of the ways that you can do that is by encouraging and allowing homes with smaller footprints that are more affordable to entry-level buyers, that sort of thing. Um, so I think there are ways to go about encouraging owner occupancy and having policy in place that allows different types of housing to be built to get more people into homeownership. Um, but I think we would really caution you all in very directly stating that you don't want rentals in Dunwoodie.
Okay. And we've we've heard a lot of talk about A D U's and then Commissioner Brown referenced a study. That sounds like a pretty intense study that would be required in order to understand how we wanted to implement. With this being a, you know, a twenty-year plan, how would, if the A D U study reveals that that is a a positive direction to go, how how would that saw to tend to an existing plan like this at such times that study completes?
So there's a couple of things. Um, while this is a twenty-year plan, um, you are required to update your plan every five years. So there's an automatic update period that you all have to do. You can also amend your comprehensive plan at any time. You don't have to wait for that five-year mark. So if you were to go ahead and do a more detailed study on A D U's, I think the bigger part of that study is not necessarily the technical aspect of A D U's. It's more about getting community consensus around what people are okay with and willing to accept versus does this work on our lots, that sort of thing? I think that's where we're, we are not hearing consensus from your community about A D U. So it's not about a technical study per se. But um, again, w- once that direction is decided upon, it's it's a fairly straightforward amendment process that you would do through D C A.
Okay. All right. So the amendment does involve going before the state again and seeking approvals up the chain.
Yeah, so you would you would bring on amendment to uh, you know, it'd probably come through here at uh, planning commission at first and say, you know, we recommend a city council to approve this amendment, city council within say, hey, hey, look, we want to amend our comprehensive plan. We're gonna submit it to D C A. Um, you know, usually D C A is not super concerned about um, you know, smaller amendments like that. Uh, as long as it meets your state planning standards, um, they're they're generally gonna approve pretty much anything.
Okay. Uh, with regard to the uh, red, yellow and green light technique, um, when we see uh, items in the yellow, it requires public vetting. I mean, that that those were the words that I believe I heard you say. At varying times through our existence as a body, we've seen certain types of cases be rerouted to community development and and what I would consider to be a maybe a less public process. Do we have any idea what those processes are gonna look like? Or is that strictly reserved for implementation uh, in the U D L?
So I think that's primarily gonna be figured out through the U D O process. Um, initially, when we crafted this approach, we were thinking of the yellow as being pretty much a a slump process. Um, but there are um, you know, a few other mechanisms to consider based off of, you know, what are those concerns that most people would have around these specific land uses in these areas? So we want to make sure that we are aligning the right process with the right issues to make sure that the community has a forum to to weigh in on these these types of developments that in some cases may or may not be acceptable.
Okay, but the but what we're looking at is uh, still a process by and large with these yellows where there is going to be significant
Yes.
public involvement. I mean, I think that's that's the concern here. We don't wanna, we don't wanna lose public involvement on these.
Yes. So the the, yes. So the yellow is very much highlighting, this is extra scrutiny through a public process for this type of use to be approved.
Okay. Uh, and and getting a little bit more specific, what happens? I heard uh, Mr. Ziffer discuss, you know, potential uh, uncertainty that may face, you know, Vanderland and Chestnut and some of these aging facilities and and a future plan. What becomes of parcels that may not be used? So these are gonna be significant parcels of land, but they may no longer be part of the part of the school's plan. What becomes of those? I mean, I I see them, I think by and large, they're mapped to the suburban neighborhood character area. Do they revert to that? What does that look like?
Yes. So um, if if the, if DeKalb County Schools decides to divest that from their real estate portfolio and sell that land, um, the same rules would apply to that land as anything else in that character area.
And that's regardless of who they sell to, obviously.
Yep, yep. It's just about the character area and that stoplight would apply to whoever that new owner is.
Okay, so with that in mind, you know, I hope it's not going anywhere, but what about something like Brook Run? Uh, why do we, why do we want that necessarily to be any character area that's that's not, you know, suburban neighborhood in the sense that Brook Run, I believe on all four sides, if there are sides, surrounded by neighborhood, why wouldn't we want that to revert if heaven forbid that ever sells? Why wouldn't we want that flip back to to suburban neighborhood?
Um, you know, it could. I think it's it's such um, an unlikely proposition for uh, your premier park to disappear that we frankly, didn't even consider that as a possibility. Um, instead by calling it out as its own area, not keeping it in the suburban neighborhood, we want to say this is different. And the the main reason it is its own character area now is to allow for some very small-scale commercial uses to kind of help activate certain parts of the park. So that is a change from your current plan. If that is a change that makes folks uncomfortable, that's something that's pretty easy to put back into the suburban neighborhood area. Um, but in our experience, it would be extremely extremely unusual for that to flip over into some sort of parcel that would be available for private development.
Well, and and I think kind of keeping with that, you you unusual, but let's be ready for it. You know, what about the the J C C? Again, I believe bordered on all sides by the neighborhood, but if the J C C opts to
Right.
move elsewhere.
And that's a great point. So that is what exactly why we called out that civic campus as its own area. And we put almost, I think almost every use is in that yellow band for the civic campus area if that were to happen, right? So that because that is such a substantial property, we would want there to be sort of an extra layer of scrutiny and community conversation around such a large parcel surrounded by suburban neighborhood. So that one, because that's not a public park, we say, you know what? That's with more within the realm of possibility for changing. So that's why we have a substantially larger list of possible uses for that if that were to be developed in, say, Brook Run Park.
So what I'm understanding you to say is, should the J C C pull up stakes and get rid of that parcel of land? The fact that everything is yellow, at least conceptually, and I mean, again, I know we're we're dealing with generalities, not the specifics, would force heavy public scrutiny through what whatever would happen with that piece of land?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And and that was an exact conversation we had with the steering committee. And that's exactly why we pulled that out of the suburban neighborhood process.
Okay, okay. I think that'll do it for my questions at this point. And and I see we're coming upon looks like seven fifty-eight right now. Um, unless anybody objects, I'd like to go ahead and call a five-minute recess or seven-minute recess. And we'll restart promptly at eight oh five. Any issues with that? All right, we're in recess. Thank you. Go ahead and call us back to order. At this time, we've, we've had, you know, the presentation, we've had insight from people for or against, we've had the opportunity to ask our questions. At this point, we have also said fairly well to Commissioner Brown for the day, so we are now, we're now a body of six for the remains of the meeting. At this point, I think it would make sense to see if we can come to consensus about a motion to build and figure out a way to you know, in what manner we want to send this forward, with what sort of guidance do we want to provide? In order to send this forward and my, my belief is we'll probably have to take a few swings at what we want included in the motion. Uh, and then kind of formalize it and then, and then go through the formal process. I don't know what that's going to look like exactly, but I have no doubt that we can we can, you know, reflect that, so. I know I have heard some kind of singular good ideas or items that would be easy to modify without kind of costing any real capital, and I'm talking about the, the page forty-eight adjustment. I think something like that would be, you know, that's putting, putting the neighborhoods at the top of the, at the top of the graphic as opposed to the bottom and making whatever commensurate adjustments. I think that's something that would be a pretty easy give, but Commissioner Edmondson had some thoughts about things as well. I, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Commissioner. What I do want us to do, all of us on the spot, is figure out what we, what recommendations we want to make. And let's go ahead and begin taking inventory of that, so.
Well, my observation is that most of the things that would that we have discussed tonight that are more specific are going to be addressed in the ordinance and the ordinance rewrite as opposed to making amendments to the plan. That's, that was kind of my perception of the discussion.
Okay, all right, well, and certainly we're dealing in kind of generalities and ideas versus the details. So that, that can is to a certain extent kick down the, kick down the road a little bit. Do you, are there any things you would like to see done differently here? Or any hot buttons that you have?
Um, I saw three, I noted three things that should probably be in a motion. Um, one to the point of reordering the visions or focuses of the plan and putting maintain our neighborhoods uh, first on that list of three. Removing or moving regional commission in the Ashford character area to the inappropriate category. Um, so it's similar to Georgetown West. Moving regional commercial use in the Ashford character area to inappropriate. To be similar to the Georgetown West character area. And then lastly, adding to the community work plan and action item to coordinate with the city of Sandy Springs for a vision for the perimeter area. And that's to match the recommendations that come from the vision statements and the other local centers that have small area plans suggested.
Commissioner Shen, you just brought something up that we haven't really talked about today. And I'd like to understand that. Can you, can you give a little bit more background what you're talking about when you're saying that?
Um, so in the priorities, in the three priorities and visions, it's keep investing in perimeter, cultivate local centers and then maintain our neighborhoods. And so the local centers are called out and explain what those are. And they associate with the character area. Perimeter center is a character area. And it has certain action items in the community work plan, but it doesn't have um, something specific to the shared uh, like county boundary between Sandy Springs and Fulton County and Dunwoody and DeKalb County. Um, it kind of focused the action items in the community work plan within the perimeter center area focus on the perimeter CID or like transportation projects within that, the edge city plan. Um, but there's nothing specific for, so it wouldn't be a small area plan because edge city plan already exists. It's more so looking at those parcels that either share the two different counties. And like those streets that kind of share the two different cities and counties.
Are you suggesting that by spiking this out the way you are, it helps us kind of smooth that transition? Do we done Woody and Sandy Springs and keep some more cohesive vision?
Yes, um, because how the other um, items are written in the community work plan, it's like coordinate with the city of Peachtree Corners, coordinate with the city of Sandy Springs to do a small area plan or do a redevelopment vision for those local centers or those character areas.
Okay, so that is calling out that specific location to make sure that we coordinate with them.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I heard you list three items that you're interested in, in kind of annexing to this, this pass along. One was the, the page forty-eight change, the neighborhood. Uh, the second was making the regional commission and Ashford to match the Georgetown West. Uh, and then third was spiking out the community work plan with the city of Sandy Springs to match recommendations and others. Okay, all right, and when it comes time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you for that wording on that because I'm pretty sure I butchered it. But when we, when we have, when it comes time to formalize wording on that, I'm gonna gonna look to you to do that, assuming, assuming we make that all part of the motion. Commissioner Edmondson, you had some thoughts as well?
Um, yeah, I think we're pretty aligned on that. Um, I think the only other thing I would put in is that I'd like to just have it noted that ADUs would be looked at as part of the U D O. And I think Commissioner Shen and we are talking about how DeCater has done it, look at precedents in neighboring areas for helping in crafting that. I think we don't have to decide that now, but I think it's important to note that that should be done during the U D O.
Okay, so just kind of an aspirational, let's make sure this doesn't get lost. Okay, okay. Is there anything else you wanted to add or?
Don't think so. I think that pretty much covers it. Oh, yeah, I think it's also consideration of adjusting Peachtree Boulevard. I understand the ten stories thing, but that we need to build up in order to densify, but I just wonder if there's a way to maybe meet in the middle where it was, it's not so intense. Um, living in that area, I just think that would be a lot of additional intensity and congestion there.
Well, are you talking about a shift in the allowed uses from green to yellow or something along those lines?
A shift in the proposed stories for that area? The intensity, the intensity.
Okay, so what, what do you propose? What, what sort of guidance?
I would propose eight being the maximum for that area.
Okay, okay. All right.
We heard some analysis about what it takes to
Oh, sorry, Commissioner, could you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah, that'd be a good start.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we heard some analysis about what it takes for it to be economically viable. And I'd be interested in hearing whether if we crank it, I support the idea of eight very much. But I'd like to know that we're not just creating an impossible situation where is, if it were cranked down to eight, could you still attract the redevelopment and make it economically viable?
We've had conversations around this in the steering committee. And we had a developer sort of on the, on the team. The, the thought is for redevelopment to happen of, of, of existing property, you need to, if you just tear down and rebuild the same number of units, you haven't accomplished anything yet from a development standpoint. Um, so if, if redevelopment is sort of anticipated, then often sort of that in incentive needs to be there. Then the, the six stories, your typical mid-rise, mid-rise building, five or six story. And then we have people sort of being possibly opposed to the sort of regular mid-rise building sometimes from an aesthetic standpoint because they can tend to be blocky. So I think the idea there at the steering committee was that the ten stories would be something that is that is giving people sort of additional density. And it also allows for a different design that isn't just a bulky building, but that has potentially more architectural gravitas.
Paul, I understood your words. But, and I don't apologize, I'm not trying to be difficult. What are you, what are you trying to tell us?
That, so if it gets redeveloped, that there's in, in development, there's certain uh, building types that are very common. Right, you have a townhouse that is typically two or three stories, but it isn't eight or so, they give a typical mid-rise building that tends to be five or six stories. That's partially from a building code standpoint, because additional requirements start to kick in at a certain height. Fire code requirements that kick in at a certain height. So you have, you know, typical, so you have cost thresholds, so to say. So you can build a certain building type up to a certain height. So you have mid-rise buildings typically at six stories. And then if you have, if you allow seven or eight stories, there is no, you know, there's additional building code requirements, additional fire code requirements that kick in that are fairly expensive. Where if someone will not build a seven or eight story buildings typically, the, the way for these buildings to pencil out at higher height with higher um, the buildings that are built to a higher standard, that's like concrete and steel buildings, is to have additional height allowed. So I think that that was the thought behind this.
So am I hearing you say that the height requirement might actually result, though it's more density, might result in a higher quality proposal?
That, that was the thought behind it.
That makes sense.
Okay, how does that change, how does that change your thoughts on, on forming this?
I mean, I think that, that, that helps. So I appreciate that context. I think that I could get on board with that. I think my only other question would be, would that come before us at all? Or would that just be allowable?
And that's presently, so presently this wouldn't be allowed under the current zoning. So what, what this would say is if a zoning case came before you all or the city council, then it would be judged based on this. So let's say a development of ten stories height would be seen presumably as favorable. While if this was reduced to six stories and someone proposes a ten story building, then it would presumably be seen as unfavorable. That's what it is now. As part of the, the next phase of this, which is like the code rewrite, some zoning districts may be adjusted, but we, we don't know that yet. So status quo, anything that isn't compatible with the current zoning, which this one, like a ten story building would not be, would have to go through planning commission and city council.
Okay.
So I thought they were talking about building onto the current apartments. I thought that's what some, no, they would be
redeveloping, I believe, that's what I heard.
Okay, sorry, I was confused.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's, it's better with me. I'd rather see something of higher quality.
Okay.
Then I don't want to prevent somebody from coming and being able to develop something that would provide high quality affordable housing in this area just based off of two floors, so that makes sense.
So are you, am I understanding you say you might be fine striking that?
I take it back.
But I want to hear the, the second part of what Paul said, I think, is that in a later phase, we may change the zoning or the building code or whatever, such that you might not have the requirement at six, it might start at nine. Is, is that correct? You could alter it that way?
So we will have to see sort of like, as part of the, the second phase of the direction, the process, we're writing an entire new zoning ordinance or like as part of the unified development ordinance, we'll incorporate an entire new zoning ordinance um, with new districts. What this could lead to either like citywide or nowhere at all, or, or in some parts, but not others. It could lead that as part of that process that the zoning map gets changed to the new districts, similar to how it was done in the Dunwoody Village. When we did the new districts in the village, it could be that it's not done. Similar to how it was done in the perimeter center when we When we did the new perimeter center districts, depends on the wishes of the, the steering committee and eventually the city council. But, but that is sort of something that comes in that phase too.
Also, and when, if you get, uh, let's just use the ten story rebuild as part, as for this discussion. Are we able to, either as part of zoning or as part of review by our city and our staff to include enhancements such as certain higher quality building materials and parks and walkways and bike paths and things like that?
And we, 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 that's, that's part of the reason why we're doing the code update is to have these requirements in as a, just a matter of fact. Where right now we have building material requirements in perimeter center and in Dunwoody Village, but we really don't have it in Georgetown. And we think that is something that, that will happen citywide.
So what I'm hearing you say is for all the people that come here to this meeting, I should pay pretty close attention to the following meetings for the U D O. Because as they say, the devil's in the details and those are the details.
Correct. Yeah, this, this is the policy direction and then the legal mechanism will happen over the next year.
Okay.
And you will see the U D O come to you.
That's sweet.
So, and it's long.
Well, well, something to look forward to. All right. Okay, so what, what I have heard the team come up with thus far. Commissioner Shin brought, brought three recommendations as we look to push this forward. I heard a, I heard a fourth from Commissioner Edmondson in the form of recommending that we kind of weave ADUs in as appropriate as, you know, studies reveal and as, as we can find inspiration to, to implement that properly. Are there any other proposed additions or proposed thoughts as we try and push this forward? Is there anything else anybody sees that should be included?
Not really.
Was one of Commissioner Shin's suggestions that we make maintaining the neighborhoods green?
Well, the, the, it was the movement of the neighborhoods. That was the page, page forty eight move.
Being moved into the green zone.
No, no, no.
The green zone was.
To the top, it's listed, one, two, three. Well, it's not numbered, but.
Right.
The green, the green, I think you're referring to some of the letters that we received. And I think that might be the page one oh three issue regarding Ashford, which kind of hearkens back to the meeting that we had last week. With regard to, there were some concerns expressed in letters about multi-unit and mixed use being inappropriate for the Ashford area, being moved from yellow to red. That was, that was repeatedly brought up in letters that we got. Which kind of gave rise to the question that I asked about, okay, the significance of yellow, what does that mean? Who reviews it? What, what do we have there? There's, I think what we saw last week was this system working and people that were concerned about a project bringing their thoughts to the city. With regard to the way I feel, I'm not sure a change is needed because that worked, but we also don't want to miss out on good projects that everybody might say, that's great. And putting that in red, I think, you know, conceptually ties our hands. So that's my inclination is to not, not do anything on the page one oh three issue.
Okay, but I'm not sure that that's the same thing as all the public comments we got about making, maintaining the neighborhoods. It's highest priority.
That, that, that is like page forty eight where they haven't listed.
Okay, it is. Yeah. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, good. Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other thoughts? We've got, we've got.
I more have a question for staff of what the recommendation is it just recommend, just to recommend the plan? Is it approval? Recommend to send it to council?
The way I would do it, if you want to recommend approval, I would recommend approval, but with these amendments. And we're going to include the steering committee presentation as the plan to council. Hopefully with your recommendation and then all those additional comments would be included in there.
Okay, thank you. Having heard that and heard that direction, is there, is there anybody who would like to bring forth a motion for us to consider?
I guess I will.
Thank you. You'll do fine.
I recommend approval of the draft twenty twenty four, twenty forty five comprehensive plan with the following amendments. To remove regional commercial as a use or move regional commercial to inappropriate in the Ashford character area. That's condition one. Condition two, to reorder the draft visions to have maintain our neighborhoods listed first on page forty eight. That, that impacts a couple of other pages as well, reordering them. The third condition slash amendment is to add to the community work plan, an item to coordinate with the city of Sandy Springs to develop a vision for the shared perimeter area. And then lastly, for T S W to, and the consultant and city staff to consider a policy slash zoning recommendation as it refers to ADUs during their U D O process.
That was excellent. And I, I am, I'm not going to go ahead and repeat that unless staff needs that. I think that was excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Shin. We've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Commissioner Wallach seconds it. Hearing a motion and a second is now appropriate to have debate or discussion. Is there any further debate or discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, it's time to move forward with a, with a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Looks like that carries unanimously. I want to thank you, team, and thank you, Commissioner Shin. At this time, do we have any other business to conduct? Okay, is there any public comment at this point, at this time? Is there anybody who wants us to hear anything else? Any final words? Yes, ma'am.
I want to reiterate how strongly I believe that sort of the code language of multi-unit should be moved from yellow to red. The, the motion's been made, the vote has been made. I appreciate that. But I want to say publicly, and I will continue to advocate that that be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this point? Yes, Ms. Taylor.
This was the small thing that I saw. Um, there's a street glazed drive that has single unit large lot homes on it. And it's in the air and it, it's in the area that has single lot, large, or large lot homes as red, not allowed. So I had mentioned that to, to Allison, but.
Okay, so are, are we talking about, are we talking about an error that can be fixed, can be fixed as a matter of course, team?
That wasn't just.
It's, it's, it's like at the end of the day, it's a policy. It's a policy issue more than a, than, than the error, but we'll, we'll take a look at this with the consultants too. Any, anything we've heard, like I've, I've taken, I've written down two, two, two pages of lists, anything. We're still in the phase of going through the plan to even from a sort of error prevention and quality, the quality control standpoint, all of these things we're going to look at.
Okay, so that, that is not, it's not a done issue. It's not something that really came before us and was discussed, but it is an issue that's still in development.
We have a lot of this. Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing is, I guess this is more of a question is like, okay, the ten stories. I know that the neighborhoods right behind, sorry, this is for the Peachtree industrial apartments we're talking about. They, there's behind there, there's some small streets that have small lot, single family homes. And I don't know, I don't know of anybody that's over there that knows anything about these comprehensive plans. So at what point would they be, if, if there is discussion and I mean, is, is it a done deal that, that would be the councils or sorry, the planning councils, commissions, recommendations that the, that be the use?
Nothing is a done deal as of anything that we say, what we do is we're a recommending body.
Right.
And we've heard issues that we believe bear addressing and have discussed them and are moving it forward in the process. There will be additional opportunity to share their concern, should they have concern.
Right, right.
And of course, the U D O will be the particulars.
Okay, so that there would be a process where it would.
Yes.
They, they would be informed before. Yeah, okay.
Well, they were informed about this meeting as well, so I would absolutely encourage them to participate in the process at any stage.
A notice and an opportunity.
Right, exactly, which is what this was. So, but yes, this is not the end of the road.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Taylor.
Looking at the ten floors, trying to understand, just for clarification, when you go between like five or six and ten, can you use different materials? Cause I know at the Capitol a few, a few years ago, we, the lumber people pushed back. We had to use stick built and a lot of stuff and Dunwoody could not use steel and concrete. Where does that threshold mean? I just don't know.
Yes, six, six stories.
Okay, so above six or six, six and above or above six? But everything else.
All right. Do you have anything you want to come to, to commission at this point? I want to make sure we, we keep this thing moving. Okay, any other, any other comment, any other public comment to commission? All right, any commission comment at this point?
I just had one comment. I just want to thank the rest of the team. I know we were all here late last week and we're here again this week and all engaged. And I want to thank staff for long hours as well and all the hard work that went into this. And it's just a pleasure to be around such like-minded people that care. And I appreciate the folks that come out and, and speak as well and take time out of your days. So thank you for being here.
Agreed. And to echo that, I want to pay particular thanks to Commissioners Shannon and Brown. I guess there's been a whole lot of meetings on that timeline that didn't involve this body. And I know that's been a lot of time. So thank you for that. And also thank you for your willingness to continue smithing it. So, all right, anything else, commission? With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you. So, oh, you got one next week?